Hi everyone, welcome back to Keeping Up with the Caldeans. I'm Anthony Toma, your host, along with my co-host, SD Elias. We're here today with Monica Yatuma. She was up for Oakland County Commission. Unfortunately, didn't work out, but we learned a lot. We figured out a lot and made a lot of friends, people in high places. And you're here to tell us a little bit about that journey and shed some light on the whole process and everything else that's going on in the political realm. So, welcome. Thanks for joining us.
Thanks for having me. I'm happy to be here.
Thank you. You want to start off with introducing yourself and kind of just talking about the race?
Yeah, for sure. So, like Anthony said, my name is Monica Yatuma. First and foremost, I'm a mom. And so, that's how I got here. I ended up running for the Oakland County Commission. And it was a wonderful race. It was an uphill battle from the start. And it was a challenge that I was, that I happily accepted because I knew what was at stake and what was on the line. So, I was happy to do it. Unfortunately, it didn't work out, but very important life lessons learned. Learned a lot of wonderful things. I met a lot of wonderful people. And it's definitely just the start of a new chapter in my life, I would say.
Very cool. And what afforded you that, the chapter in your life? Like, what made you spring into action?
Yeah, so, you know, by nature, I'm not a person that can be told what to do. If you try to tell me what to do, it's just, I'm gonna do the opposite. So, when things started getting a little crazy with COVID, you know, in the beginning, nobody really knew what it was. So, we did what we were told. Yeah, it was very scary.
Especially with children in the house.
Yeah, and you know, grandparents, the deafening children. And so, the scary part, right, it was kind of like a roller coaster. Then we got into the part of the ride where we hit mandates. And so, at first, I was like, oh, okay, no big deal. We're not really gonna mandate this stuff. But then, came the vaccines, then the mask mandates. And so, went through all that with the state, which you guys know, you guys lived it too. And so, they lifted all the mandates. But, they didn't lift them for the kids and the schools, which means zero sense.
Zero.
Yeah, and so, I was already on edge with everything that was going on. And then, that hit, and I thought, you know what, this is unfair. They're kids, they're not gonna say anything. They come home and tell me, "Mom, I have a headache today," or "Mom, my stomach hurts." And I'm like, "I keep wearing this mask, I can't breathe." And I thought, "This is not okay." So, I already had a group of friends and a bunch of people that I would talk to about it. And I said, "Guys, we can't just keep complaining about it. We gotta do something." And so, that's what birthed Parents Against Mandates. So, we started this group, and everybody was mad and wanted to get involved. And so, we had to get organized. And so, we had to figure out, who do we need to talk to about this? So, we were told, "You go talk to your commissioners, because they hire and fire the health officer, and they fund the health department." Great, we did that. I got about 1,500 parents. A few of us did, and we went to this meeting and talked to them. And we just, we weren't happy with how much they weren't doing.
Yeah.
So, you know, we kept on, and I worked with different legislators, some senators, and some commissioners were great, but some of them were not. And so, ultimately, I didn't feel like my opponent was doing anything. And so, that's how I ended up running for commission. And I remember, I told her, I said, "If you don't do something and stand up for these conservative values and for these kids, we're gonna find somebody to run against you." Not thinking at the time that that somebody was gonna be me.
Right, right.
Yeah, because I never in a million years thought that I would ever get into politics because I knew it was a pain in the butt. I worked on the Clint Castro campaign, and I left that campaign and said, "Never again."
Yeah.
Never again.
They're grueling.
Yes. Clint does it well, and God bless him, but I said, "Never again." And so, but here I am.
Yeah.
And that's why I ended up running.
Maybe it's meant to be.
Yeah.
That you are.
Maybe.
Tell us more about your background, like your upbringing, or like your professional background, because I think it speaks so much to, like, just the badass woman that you are.
Thanks. So, I grew up, three girls, no boys. So, my dad was hell-bent on, "I'm gonna treat him like a boy, they're gonna play sports, it's not gonna be any different." And so, we did that. I actually played travel hockey growing up.
Amazing.
Yeah, basketball, volleyball.
Really?
Yeah, I was an athlete growing up, and I was super competitive. For whatever reason, I turned out to be very ambitious. I went to school at Oakland University. I'm like, "I don't wanna take two, four years to finish college." So, took extra classes, finished in three years. The plan was law school, so I started it.
See that for you?
Yeah, yeah. So, U of D is where I was going. I was set to go. We're getting ready to get started. And then, my husband, well, my boyfriend at the time, proposed.
Yeah.
And so, we had the conversation, like, "Is this really worth it? Law school's expensive, and it was gonna, you know, put me in debt." I said, "You know what, let's try something else. If it doesn't work, I can always go back to law school." Anyways, I ended up getting into sales. So, medical device rep for a long time. And so, you know, the ambitious me was like, "I don't wanna keep working for people, making them all this money. I wanna keep this money for myself, because I'm out there working for it."
Yeah.
So, I left, and I started my own company. And my husband, Randy, obviously helped a lot financially, definitely. I couldn't have done it without him.
What's the name of the company?
It's called Metro Detroit Medical Waste. And we service, we now service the entire state. We're all over the whole state.
That's incredible.
Yeah. And so, any healthcare facilities that have medical waste, and not just healthcare facilities, think like tattoo parlors, anywhere that uses needles.
Wow.
So, our drivers will go and pick up the bins, switch them out, and that's what we do.
That's amazing. When did you start that?
So, we started that about a little over 10 years ago now.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, yeah.
And you still run it, like, part-time or full-time?
No, full-time. Randy is more of the face now, because when I started it, I was pregnant with my third. So, I was the face in the beginning. I had to teach him everything. Because you're talking about a guy that came from liquor stores, right? He didn't know how to get in the corporate world and talk sales and all that. So, I taught him all that, and he was great at it. And so, he took it and ran with it. And so, I slowly kind of moved into the background of things. But in the last couple of years, I've kind of been the face again and tried to get out and, you know, obviously grow the company.
That's amazing.
Yeah.
I love that. So, during COVID, that's when you were really inspired to make change?
Yes, absolutely. I don't ever, so here's the thing, and we're all Caldean, right? We know what our parents went through to come here.
Yeah.
And I certainly don't think they wanted it to be wasted on our kids or their grandchildren, right?
That's for sure.
They want us to be able to take what they gave us and hand it to our kids. And so, I honestly felt in my heart that I couldn't do that with everything that was going on. At first, I thought, "Oh, it's just a mask mandate." And then, the vaccine mandate came out, and then I kind of saw the baby steps that they were taking to slowly take control over our day-to-day lives. And I thought, "Okay, this isn't okay." Because the second we give up certain rights, what a lot of people don't realize is, we don't get them back, right? Just like inflation, once those prices go up, they're not calming down.
I agree.
Yeah, so, I was like, "Holy cow, we gotta get in front of this." And so, we had enough people that wanted to get involved and do that. And so, that's how the movement started.
Yeah. Anthony loves mask mandates. They're like, one of his favorite.
Yeah, that's my stuff. That's my stuff. I wear the one with the two respirators on it.
Oh, my gosh, I went to Cogger once, and I saw, this guy was like in a whole scoop outfit. I mean, he had the mask. I thought to myself, "Oh my," and it's sad.
Poor guy, right?
Yeah. He's so brainwashed, like, "What do you think COVID's gonna do? Come down and kill you?" I mean...
Well, early on, we thought it might.
They are now.
You know, early on, they were showing, you know, little shots in Japan, China, where people were just falling over in the streets. It was like, it was like, they were really hitting us with it. So, it was scary at first, but then, you know, then common sense started to set in, back in, and like, "What is this? You know, why would they tell us this when this is actually going on? Why would they keep this medicine from us when it's actually helping? Why would they do this? Why would they..." You know, and the respirator, whole thing respirator. And then, there was a million respirators on a ship that never made it to shore. And it's crazy.
Wild.
Didn't use or need, yeah.
Thankfully, things have like calmed down, I feel like, and slightly back to normal. But what is like your...
Monkeypox are coming, though.
Yeah, monkeypox.
Just declared a global pandemic last week.
Yeah. What is your concern right now with, like, I can see your big "why" is protecting your children and make sure they have like the best life possible. So, what's your big concern now?
So, my big concern now is that they got the ball rolling with COVID, right? So, this is kind of like they were testing the waters to see, "Okay, how much of a power grab can we make here? How much, how many people can we get to listen? And how much can we divide these people on this issue? Because we're so divisive right now. We've never been so divided." And so, they got a taste for it, and they thought, "Huh, it kind of worked," you know?
You did it.
Yeah, so...
They deserve credit, really, they really do. They laid out a plan, and they executed. Yeah, they're smart.
Yeah, they're smart.
Yeah, they're playing chess, and we're playing checkers out here.
It's genius, and I say that, and obviously, as I got involved in politics, I got involved as a Republican because those values more aligned with mine. And so, I say this all the time, and I say, "If Republicans don't get their shit together, we're gonna get to a point where they're gonna be very difficult to beat."
Yeah.
Because they're smart. Yeah, what they do really well is they play the long game. They're not looking at tomorrow, they're looking at five years from now, or 10 years from now. And so, we're always so reactive. And that was a big part of Parents Against Mandates. I'm like, "Guys, we can't keep being reactive. We have to be proactive."
So smart.
Yeah, and be ready for this stuff to come. So, now monkeypox is coming, and like you said, it's died down a little bit, it's a little more calm. Well, yeah, because we're up on an election year.
Exactly.
So, November's gonna roll around, they're gonna take whatever seats they take. And then, after that, it's right back to mandates, or whatever they can do. Yeah, the fear. Listen, when you play on emotion, and fear is an emotion, it works. And so, that's why they ruled with that.
Yeah.
So, when people are fearful, they adopt, and not just fearful, you take Christ out of society, which they've been working really hard to do.
Nuclear family dissolving with families.
So, you couple that, you take Christ out of society, and people start to adopt irrational thinking. And the TV, or CNN, or whatever becomes their god, or whatever they're being told to do.
Yeah.
And so, that's a part of their plan too, because if somebody doesn't have any, you know, beliefs or certain values or morals, or they don't believe in a god, they're gonna look for something or someone else to look up to and follow. And that's a problem, yes.
So, what do you see as like coming next?
A lot of rest. I'm exhausted. I'm definitely not going anywhere. I know that the one thing that the Democrats are really focused on are our kids. Because what they learned is, you know, stubborn people like me in their way, they're starting to think, "Oh, shoot, we gotta get them when they're younger, when they're more impressionable." So that as they grow, they're already thinking the way we want them to think. They don't want people like me getting in front of them and trying to stop anything they're doing or starting any movements. And so, and in my campaign, I don't even refer to it as a campaign. I almost look at it like it was a movement. Because you have me, who's never been in politics, and, you know, I was just trying to really truly make a difference. Not necessarily, I didn't have an agenda going into it. I just wanted to change everything that was happening. And so, what comes next, I don't know. But as far as on the parental rights front, I'm definitely gonna remain an activist there. That's not going anywhere. Is there a political future for me? I think so, and I think it's important to note that, you know, in my district, I took 40% of the vote, which was for my first time.
Amazing.
Yes.
Huge accomplishment.
It was great. The other thing too is, politics is also a numbers game. So, these elections, we look at the results, we look at the numbers, and we have to analyze the data. And so, you know, normally in my primary, we'd have about a 6,000 voter turnout, normally. 2020 was the biggest, and it was like 6,200. We had 9,200 come out and vote in this primary, which was, the district's a little bigger, but still, it's a little abnormal. So, just diving in and having some analysts look at it, we definitely had a lot of Democrat crossover votes. And so, I want to mention this, and I want people to know about this because it's a tactic that they're using now to not only get in, you know, their people into the positions that they want, but also to get in the Republican candidates that they want, that they wanna try to face in the general election, excuse me. So, they try to get the weaker Republican candidates through the primary, and so that way, their candidates on the Democrat side can verse their weaker Republican.
Yep.
So, that's another tactic they're using. Now, I know a lot of people are just hurting, they're sick of the fraud and this kind of stuff. But it's so important, and I really want to stress this, that you have to go out and vote. You have to. So, we had a 9,200-person turnout, which is high for a primary, but there's 65,000 constituents in the district.
Yeah.
So, it's really a small number. So, we can beat this, and we can beat what they're doing if we just get people to go out and vote.
Yeah. That's amazing. I can definitely see, like, you have a future in politics. I feel like this was just your warm-up, and you did so well with it, and so, that's exciting.
The support was like so overwhelming, and even now, when I lost, people were, people were more upset than me.
Yeah.
They were more upset than me, you know? I had volunteers at every precinct on the day, you know, on voting day, and they kept texting me and calling me like, "Man, all these people coming in here saying they're voting for you." And we felt good. We thought this was gonna be a good, even if I lost, I thought, "I'm not gonna lose by much." So, you know, I take it as a compliment that they had to go out of their way to beat me.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, so, and I still took 40% of the vote.
Amazing.
It's still a win in my book.
Yeah.
And I still have all my great supporters. I'm not gonna let them down. I don't ever want it. That's the thing that bothered me a little bit. I thought, "Gosh, really? A lot of people were excited about having me in there. They wanted change."
Yeah.
And so, for that, I'm sorry. I hope no one feels let down, but I will make it up. And I'm not going anywhere. Believe me, I'm still here to guide and lead parents and fight this fight. I'm not going anywhere, so.
What do our, what do you recommend that everyone does out there for the upcoming election?
Well, definitely go out and vote. That's super important.
Yeah.
But you know, I still talk to a lot of parents that are fearful to express their views. And so, to that, I say, "Just, you know, don't be afraid. Their other side's not afraid." They're loud and proud, turning their face. Yep, they're out there saying that we're extreme, and we're killing people because, you know, we want masks to be mandated. And so, if we don't stand up now, there's gonna be nothing left to stand up for, even just maybe five years from now. So, just remember, once they take away certain rights, they're never coming back. So, go out and vote. Don't be afraid to stand up for, you know, what's important to you. You don't have to be loud and crazy, but just take a stance. Because if you're not at least taking a stance, you're really just helping the other side.
Right.
Yeah.
And so, who's, who in the coming elections do you think people should look out for and support?
Yeah, so the primaries are done. So, Tudor Dixon took the, you know, took the primary for governor. And so, I know that was a really divided race, you know, everybody wanted someone different. But I really have to stress that it's important to unite, and as a party, and as people, and to get behind Tudor. John James is running. He's incredible. And then, just, you know, obviously, you don't have anybody to pick from now on the Republican side because the primaries are over, but just support the candidates. And I will tell you, if you can, volunteer some of your time, because we need the volunteers. But also, my least favorite part of running this campaign was having to ask for money. And you have to ask, because you can't, I mean, I self-funded a lot of it, and thank God a million times, I was in a position to be able to do that. And I had wonderful people like Anthony that were, you know, willing to step up and donate and contribute because they realized this fight is so important, but we don't have enough of that. And so, just know that it's so hard for us to ask, but you know, if you have and you're willing, whoever you like, go out there, support them. If you can't give them your time, give them a little bit of money. Goes a long way. The mailers are expensive, the signs are expensive. Everything we do costs money. Nothing is free. And if you want to win, I hate to say it, but it's really the money that will be the determining factor in the success of a campaign.
That's true.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's like a business.
Yeah.
A lot of people just don't understand that, and I'm glad that you shed some light on it. But it is the money. It's like, it's the war chest, and that's why you have people from outside of our districts, or our area, or our state dumping money into campaigns for the opposition to help them with their campaigns and to help them win a seat.
Yeah, I will tell you, the Democrats are out fundraising us by millions.
Oh, yeah.
By millions. And the other issue that we're dealing with now is, the data's coming out that Republicans are having to rely on mega donors because the donors, like just regular donors, that typically like regular people, they're so disheartened with everything, they don't want to give their money.
Yeah, they're beaten.
And that's a problem. So, that's why I say, unite, 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 get behind these candidates, support them. I know you're mad about certain races. I know people are mad about my race, but I'm not giving up. I'm not, I'm mad. I'm not sad, I'm mad. But you know what, just like I took my frustration with the kids and the mandates, and I turned it into a campaign, I'm gonna take the frustration now and do something bigger with it.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, they probably, they probably lost because, they probably lost because you lost. Like, they would have been maybe better off if you had been in a seat. Now, you're a wild card. Now, you're a free agent.
I can do whatever I want, like, yeah, because my campaign manager and my analysts were like, "Well, tone it down." I'm like, "But that's the whole reason I got here, by not being toned down." They're like, "Yeah, but now you tone it down." And I'm like, "Yeah, being told what to do again, but hey, I want to win." But I'll tell you what, in the commission, I can tell you, they didn't want me in there because they knew I was gonna get in there.
Of course.
Yeah, they knew. That's why the Democrats are willing to help the Republicans in certain races because they don't want someone like me in there.
Exactly.
You know, and so, that's where we all come in to support these candidates and say, "Uh-uh, you don't get to decide for us. The people get to decide."
Right.
So...
How do you, how do you tell when a candidate is authentic? How, what's, what are some of the signs?
You know, talk to them.
Yeah.
Ask them questions. Are they reachable? So, you know, I, are they working hard? I probably knocked from May to Tuesday, I probably knocked on over 3,000 doors.
Jesus.
Yeah, I went out, I walked, I talked to people. They loved that I was at their door. I said, "Ask me whatever you want. I'm an open book." You know, and pay attention to see if they changed their stance on anything. If they do, then you know they're a little wishy-washy, or maybe a little flaky. I never changed my stance on anything.
Yeah.
You know, people would ask me if I was pro-life, "Yeah, you bet your butt I'm pro-life, and that's not gonna change." I had people come at me, attack me, but I didn't waver in my stance. And you want a candidate that's not gonna waver in their stance. Because what I've learned about politics is that you get genuine people like me that go in for the right reasons, okay? But then they get in, and they're like, "Oh, shoot, I gotta do this to play ball, and I gotta make this person happy." So, you want someone that's gonna get in there and not have the tendency to do that.
For the reason why they got in, they got voted, they got their votes because of their stance while they were running, campaigning. So, let's stand by it.
And that's, and that takes me back to the money portion. If you want a candidate that's not gonna be bought and paid for, you have to support them. Otherwise, we have to rely on PACs, and those PACs are gonna come back and say, "You need to vote this way because we supported you." That's just how politics works. But if you want, you want control to truly be in the people's hands, get out and help them on their campaigns. And if you can't physically help them, donate to their campaigns.
Yeah.
And that's how we take back our republic.
Let's talk a little bit about the Board of Education.
Yeah.
What can you tell us about that and the fight that was going on there, and the people in charge there too?
Yeah, so, we have to keep in mind, teachers are unionized, and unions tend to sway towards Democrats, and that's just the way they've always been. Our school boards are made up of teachers, a lot of times, principals, you know, different, sometimes not really parents, whereas now, we're trying to make a push for that. I personally, my kids are private school, but I'm in the Wald Lake School District. And although my kids are private school, I still go to the school board meetings. I still, yeah, I go and I fight. Because if we don't, and by doing that, we learned a lot. They get to do whatever they want when we're not there and present, and fighting back, and saying, "Oh, wait a minute," or questioning what they're doing. Everything flies under the radar. Same thing was happening in the commission. So, with the school board races, we've got throughout the state, and in a lot of different counties, we made a huge push. We got a lot of parents to run. So, in my district, I know in Wald Lake, we've got really great parents running. But it's getting a little tumultuous because these pro-mandate parents found out that the anti-mask parents were running, so they all jumped in the race. And I've got like 10 people running in these races.
Yeah.
And even on school board level, it's so divided, and it's sad, but you know, it is what it is. I'm just glad we have people running, but also support those candidates because they decide, they decide ultimately your children's fate, if your kid is in a public school. But it's not just the mandates. Understand, they're pushing CRT in the curriculum. And it's funny, at one of my school board meetings, you know, when I was, got up there for public comment, I said, "You know, when we asked you to teach our kids division, we were talking about math."
Yeah.
Okay, just teach the basics, math, science, reading. Yeah, oh, yeah, I get in there and I, you know, yeah.
I've seen you.
Love your passion.
Yeah, you gotta school it a little bit, because they think they're smarter than you, they know more than you. And I'm like, "No, no, no."
Not for my kids, you know?
Yeah, no. And for other people's kids, I just care. I really care a lot. And I think that's where the passion comes from, and it makes me, it really makes it so easy to do what I'm doing because I really just care. And you're just not gonna, and I care even more when it's a parent that's afraid to speak up because I'm like, "Oh, I'm not gonna let them take advantage of you. I'm gonna, I'm gonna get up there for you. Don't worry." You know, so, you just support the candidates. That's all I ask. The school board candidates need money too. Not as much, but these days, who knows? Because the Democrats are pouring money in everywhere to support their agenda, so...
Put a sign in the yard.
Yeah, if you could put a sign in your yard, if you're not afraid to do that, I got so many signs in my yard.
I love that.
And people, people look to me to know who to vote for, so that's why I put the signs out too. So, like, you don't have to keep asking me. It's right there. It's, you know, who to support, so...
Good advertisement, right on your lawn.
Right, right.
So, what do you feel like the next, I know right now, we said it's been kind of chill with the mandates and life is somewhat extra normal. What, like, what do you see coming for...
Well, so, they've declared monkeypox a global emergency since last week, and you know...
Where?
California, did I see?
It came out from California and New York. And to be very frank, it's because they're having a bunch of gay orgies over there.
Oh, my gosh.
That's how monkeypox spreads. It's male-to-male interaction, right? Or blood, whatever. So, that's why it's coming from New York and San Francisco, they were saying, or somewhere in California. But it's just a power grab. It's just something for them to say, to push absentee ballots. Also, I will say, in my race, we had so many people vote absentee. And while that's an issue, because we don't know if they're turning in one of them or five of them, you know, that's an issue too, but again, to combat that, go out and vote. I say, "Just be vigilant, pay attention, just stay awake. That's all I ask." A lot of people are, you know, as soon as the mandates went away and people got comfortable, they're asleep at the wheel again.
Yeah.
You know, like I said, that's the whole, "Oh, you're being reactive. We gotta be proactive. Join these parent groups. We've got Parents Against Mandates. I help with Wald Lake parents, sorry, Wald Lake citizens against parental rights. That's the push for the school board and all that stuff." So, just get involved. It's minimal time. Just get involved.
How do people, I'm sorry, how do people find the WhatsApp group, the Parents Against Mandates?
So, we're on Facebook, under Parents Against Mandates-Oakland County. And we're on Telegram too. It's been a little neglected because I've been running my campaign, but I plan on getting back into it now. And the Telegram kind of fell off a little bit because the mandates kind of died down. But I'm gonna revamp some stuff, and things will pick back up, so... But Telegram and Facebook is where you can find us, and you can always find me too.
Yeah, for sure.
Yeah.
I feel like people just need to think for themselves. Whether you think X, Y, and Z, have your own thoughts, right? That's like the biggest thing.
Do some research.
Not being just told what to think, but actually sit back and be like, "Do I agree with this? Do I think this is right?" Not just because it's like a rule or a law.
Right, right, exactly. And you touched on something very important, do your research. And you asked me, "How do we know what candidates to support?" Look at their websites, look at their social media, call them, email them, ask them questions. They're just another person.
Yeah.
They're not any better than you. Just ask them, like Tudor Dixon, you know, were you there when we had lunch with her through the chamber? I can't remember. Okay. So I grilled her. I asked her something. She, at a point, she was like, you know, she got a little... I'm like, sorry, I'm not trying to be mean, but I want to know.
Yeah.
You know, and I, and any of the candidates that I met, I did that with them, because we're not in a position where we can afford to make the wrong decisions anymore.
Yeah.
Because now that's costing us a lot. We got the wrong people in office, not the right people representing us. And so they're not standing up against the mandates, not standing up for kids. So all these things matter now. And politics was a thing that, you know, like you mentioned before, like, oh, I'm not really political. But you're learning now, right? Because you have to.
True.
So politics now is like watching basketball. It's not, it's a completely different world now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's crazy. It's creeped into sports. It's creeped into everyday life.
Yeah.
I, I mean, I was the least, you know, political dude ever, you know? And then, you know, Trump got in office, and then it was like, you know, he was woke up everyone.
Yeah, that's where it started.
It just woke everyone up. It was, it was strange.
Yeah, he did us a favor, because had Hillary Clinton won, everything we're experiencing now would have already started happening.
Compounded.
Yes.
By tenfold, twentyfold, because Biden just can't do it. He's a wreck.
Well, we know there's some cognitive issues there. I mean, he's fallen off his bike, falling downstairs, and he can't even string a sentence together. But you know, when you've got the media on your side, it helps a ton.
Oh, yeah.
And that's what destroyed Donald Trump, you know? Now, granted, he did a little, he stepped on his own foot quite a few times.
Put his foot in his mouth really times, of course.
But the media destroyed him.
Yeah.
And the majority of people watch the news. They watch TV. And it's, and that's ultimately what led to his demise, is people went out and voted. They weren't voting for Joe Biden. They went out and voted against Donald Trump.
Yeah.
And so...
It was Hillary. Oh, against, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'm saying when he lost the second time.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But it's interesting, because he did use media to his advantage, because he's such a great marketer.
Yeah.
That's how he became successful. But yeah, then it ended up, you know, they were using his work against him and, you know.
He couldn't, you know what? He was never gonna win. He couldn't do anything right. He couldn't say anything right.
Against him anyway.
It's a well-oiled machine, yeah. And so it didn't matter what he did. But if you were someone who, like you mentioned, did their research, like me, I would watch, you know, where he was spending money, not spending money. I would pay attention to what committees he was putting together. Like, people would say, oh, he doesn't do anything for women. No, Ivanka led a women's committee that, and they contributed, they probably, I think, over, I was over, I don't know, six billion dollars just to give women money, entrepreneurial women to start businesses and stuff like that. So, and there's a reason that he got a lot of the Hispanic and the African-American vote, because people were working, people were making money, they were investing, they were traveling. Things were good. So if you take that economy compared to right now...
Day and night.
Yeah, day and night. So he might have been, whatever you want to call him, but he had good policies, and that's what was important.
The people of the United States of America deserve to have a second term of him, whether it's his popping off at the mouth or posting something ridiculous. The economy deserved it. The people deserved it. He should have had a second term. I don't know if he's gonna run again or not.
Yeah, do we think he's gonna run again?
I know DeSantis is not, people were hoping, but he's saying that his wife is just coming off of, you know, the breast cancer. She's just now healing, and so I don't think he'll run. I think Trump, I didn't think he would, but I started to think he might.
I'm curious why he's been so quiet.
He's endorsing candidates.
You don't want the excitement to fade. He wants to make a big bang when it's closer to.
Yeah, and you know, he probably doesn't want to tip his hand, because when I tell you, the Democrats are doing everything. They're trying to indict him on stuff still. There's anything they can so that he can't run.
Yeah.
And so I think it's probably smart for him to stay quiet until he decides, if and when he decides that he's gonna run, and just kind of make that announcement. My guess, I think he was waiting for the primaries, and then, so now maybe we'll see something, so.
Yeah, we'll see.
Before we wrap up, is there anything that we didn't touch on that you can think of?
No, no, nothing. Obviously, a huge thank you to you guys, all my supporters, everybody that was, you know, rooting for me and continue to root for me, but also the other candidates, too. Just, like I said, stay vigilant, get involved. And I know even for you that say, for you people that say, oh, politics isn't my thing, please make it your thing, because it's a part of society now. It's ingrained, and we have to get involved.
And it's our duty to our children and our parents and grandparents and everyone, family, friends. It's not a joke. It's not, it's not a joke anymore.
I love that. So get people to vote.
Yes.
Take a stance on whatever you think, whether you're for this or for that. Just, you know, have a stance about what you believe in.
Yes.
On...
Respectfully.
Respectfully, of course.
Yes, yeah. People forget that sometimes.
What would you say, we forgot to ask, what was like a challenge being in the CalDian community and running? What would you say?
You know, I think CalDians are very competitive, which I love. It's, I think that's what makes us ambitious, and that's how I am. But oftentimes, we find ourselves getting competitive with each other.
Yeah.
And so if we could just shy away from that and just rally around our CalDians, support our CalDians, I just think we can move mountains.
True.
There's enough of us, and we're all, we've got so many successful entrepreneurs in our community. I just feel like we could do so much. So instead of, you know, I hate to use the word jealous, but don't be jealous of someone that's doing something. Help them, support them. And then you know what? You go do it, too. The biggest takeaway I wanted from what I'm doing is for other women to jump up and say, oh, she did it. I can do it. I'm not anybody special, but I just want people to see, I was your average person, and I hated politics, but here I am. So if I could do it, anybody could do it.
I love that.
Yeah.
Such a good message, so.
You are special, so don't sell yourself short.
You are special.
Thank you, thank you.
But that's a really, I mean, that's a really good point of like, just women getting involved in our community. And I love that you said, like, moving mountains. We do have so many successful, intelligent people in our community that can make big change.
Yeah, and we're smart. It's in our blood. It's in our blood to be ambitious and want to... We weren't made to, and that's okay, if you're working in a corporate setting and you're working for someone, that's great. But even the ones working in the corporate setting, their majority are very successful.
They make change.
Yeah, but you know what it is?
Yeah.
We have that work ethic.
We do.
That this generation is losing, you know? And so we have to pass that on, because honestly, you know, I don't know what people are gonna do without a strong work ethic.
Yeah, I feel like we're so great in business, but we need to practice like our work ethic more in like the community, creating change and helping others and, you know, being involved in politics.
Absolutely. If it was not for my work ethic, honestly, I wouldn't have knocked on over three thousand doors on eighty, ninety-degree days. Like, I was dying. My husband would call to check on me. Are you still alive? I'm still kicking, so.
That's a good husband.
Yeah.
I love that work ethic.
Yeah.
We like to close the show with the question, what does it mean to you to be CalDian?
Oh, gosh.
You can take a moment.
Such a loaded question. You know, for me, and I'm so proud to be CalDian. For me, it means, I don't know, I guess that what comes to my mind first and foremost is like that entrepreneurial spirit I was talking about. But it means to be a leader. I feel like we're bred to be leaders, you know, just in the way that we're raised and then, you know, the whole work ethic. But I don't know. What do some people say? What does it mean to them?
Everything. They're proud, or family, food.
You know what? Family, Catholicism, all of that, the family unit. That's all the entrepreneurial work spirit, the work ethic, all of that. That's what it means to be CalDian, to me.